All right. As the temporary chair of the select board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor's News Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously gave notice to the public how to access this meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at leeh.org. If anyone has a problem with access, please call 603-659-5414, extension 312. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Also, please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Mr. Brown?
I am here and I am alone.
Katrin? Casper?
Here and alone.
And Scott Bugby on here and alone. All right. First order of business is Select Board Organization Section or Number A, elect a new particular chairperson. So as we've done in the past, we'll select nominations and then we'll have a vote depending on how many people get nominated. And then we'll have a new chair. Do you have any nominations? No?
Anyone want to be nominated?
I think Mr. Brown wants to be nominated.
I'll accept that.
Do I have a second?
Sure, I can second that.
Okay, Katrin, any other nominations?
I'll nominate Scott.
Are you trying to make this harder than it has to be?
No.
I can second that one too. Do we want to discuss what that means and who? I mean, I obviously am new and don't feel like that's necessarily the place I want to be. So is there?
Well, we've got two nominations unless somebody would like to nominate Katrin as well.
No, thank you.
So we could have all kinds of problems.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize for doing that.
We can have a discussion about it. Any thoughts? No?
No. Let's go. Let's get on with it.
All right. All those in favor of Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Are you in favor of being the chair? Yes or no?
Yes.
That's complicated. I haven't even gotten to work with Mr. Brown yet, so I don't know.
So what does that mean?
Guys, this is why it would be nice to have these conversations. I... Can you vote next?
You can say yes, you can say no, and you can abstain.
I'll abstain.
All right, I vote yes. So the motion passes. In terms of, I don't think it makes any difference if we vote for me, but we can. In terms of my election, Mr. Brown, please say no.
I'm sorry. What are we voting on right now?
Me? Since you nominated me and it was seconded.
Okay.
Say no.
Huh? No?
Say no. Katrin?
I abstain.
I say no. So, Mr. Brown, you're the chair for the upcoming year. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm glad you're here.
Can I say one thing before I turn it over to you?
Certainly, certainly.
And we all welcome Katrin to the board?
Well, I was gonna do that.
Okay, never mind. All right.
Because I wanted to absolutely welcome Katrin into the Select Board, and we're glad to have her. And then I also wanted to to say some nice words about John Lacour, who has moved on and has done a lot for this town relative to being active on various boards and committees, et cetera, for many, many years. And I think he's still going to be active. We'll see that. I think tonight we'll see him looking to get a board appointment. What's interesting about John, a couple of weeks ago, I saw a picture of the grand opening of the Market Basket, which occurred many, 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 many years ago. I'm not sure exactly what year that was. But right there in the middle of the audience was John Lacour. He had been on, I guess, on the planning committee when Market Basket wanted to get active and put the facility in and so on. So we look forward with doing business with John in the future. So let's move on. We have the liaison assignments to boards, committees, and commissions. That's the next item down. As you go down the list, you can see the Ag Commission. I'm the rep. Scott, you're on the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
I'm on the Energy Committee. Admittedly, we haven't met in quite some time. Scott, again, on the Heritage Commission. Scott on the Lamprey River Solid Waste Cooperative. We have an opening, I guess, on the Planning Board. And then the Rec Commission needs a Select Board rep. It has been without a Select Board rep in quite some time. Sustainability Committee, I guess that means none. Does that mean that there's none required or that there is none?
I don't think there is one.
The only one that's required is the Planning Board and I think the Heritage Commission.
That is correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question as somebody coming into this while we're making this decision? What does it mean to be the representative? What do we require? What are we asking of each other?
Well, I think that, you know, you attend the meetings, you don't vote in the meetings. You attend the meetings, you might give some feedback to them if something comes up relative to they want your opinion on maybe a rule or a regulation or a procedure or something, and you help out there. But for the most part, it's your liaison. You come back into the board and you give them updates periodically on what's going on, what's going on with the committee, what any problems might be with their operation, et cetera, bonds and so on.
Are you going to every single meeting? Are you going to a certain number? How are we determining how often you're there?
I'm sorry?
How are you going to every single meeting? Are you going to some meetings? How are we determining what that responsibility is for each person so that we can make sure that each commission has and board has what they need?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I address the Planning Board?
Yes.
So, thank you. The Planning Board representative is treated as a full regular member, expected to attend as many meetings as possible, and they have full voting rights. So they're treated like a regular Planning Board member is. But it's a representative from the Select Board.
And the other commissions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
In terms of my take on this, you attend as many meetings as you can. And for me, it's a conduit to learn about what they're doing. And then vice versa, for us to bring back, you know, whoever the rep is, bring back to the board if there's any particular issues or, you know. So it's really an information conduit. And I know for the Conservation Commission, they really appreciate somebody attending. I learned an awful lot on that particular group. So I find it rewarding, and I know that they appreciate somebody attending from the Select Board, so.
I guess my question is, if a commission isn't feeling like they're being represented or having enough, let's say somebody doesn't come often enough that they feel like they're not getting that representation. Is this something we can look at later, or is this, we decide this now and we don't come back to whatever?
You can always change it if you need to, in my view. But yeah. So if you sign up for something and you can't make all the meetings, I think that's okay as long as you attend some of them. Some of them and some of these particular committees meet more often than others. So, you know, as you know, from the Town Hall Renovation Committee, we meet every week. So that's a high commitment.
Beautiful.
And in terms of the zoning board and the planning board, they meet when they need to. And in terms of the Energy Committee, I'm not sure what their schedule. Conservation Commission meets once a month. Ag Commission, I'm not sure in terms of their meeting schedule these days. Lamprey Solid Waste Cooperative, they meet probably two to three times a year. So that's not a high commitment. So, and they're all different. Sustainability, I'm not sure in terms of their schedule either, so.
Are there any committees that you guys are wanting to come up with? Are you all staying on the committees you're already on?
I don't know. We haven't discussed that yet.
I didn't know.
Well, we definitely need a representative for the Recreation Committee.
I would love to do that.
You would love to do that?
I would love to do that.
Well, we'd love to have you do that.
Thanks.
That would be great. So if, I guess we have to do a vote on that?
No, I don't think we've ever voted in the past.
Okay.
I think the one that we really need to decide on, because John was on the Planning Board, we need to decide who's going to take that particular position?
Yes, that's true.
I don't know if anybody's interested.
Well, I think that we see in a...
Can I just clarify? The Planning Board meets at least once a month. They have to by law. And like this month, they're meeting three nights. They're meeting, yeah, three Wednesdays this month and four Wednesdays next month. But typically, it's one to two times a month, at least once by law.
Okay, thanks Karen.
Well, I would be willing to attend the Planning Board.
All right.
That's okay with everybody.
Fine with me.
Sounds good to me.
There is also, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Scott, there's also, I didn't see it on here, there is a racetrack committee that I, when it meets, I am the representative. It will become active as soon as the track opens up again, but it won't be any frequent meeting.
Okay. And then the last two remaining, Sustainability and the Zoning Board?
I would love to do Sustainability.
All right.
The zoning board really can't have a representative from the Select Board.
All right. So maybe we should just take that off?
Yeah.
And maybe we can put the Racing Commission on in his place?
Yeah, I honestly didn't know that that was still an active committee.
Oh, okay.
Well, I understand why not, because of course the racetrack's been closed for, what, six months now, I guess? But it is starting up again here in May. We have had some comments about, you know, the racetrack, et cetera, et cetera, starting to bubble again. So I think the committee will probably not meet very often, but I believe we will maintain the committee because we do the noise monitoring, et cetera, et cetera. And we do get some feedback from that. Maybe Tom wants to comment on that.
Yeah, as far as I know, the committee was done once we completed our charge of redoing the ordinance, coming up with how we were going to monitor the sound and measure the sound and document that. I don't even know if the other members still have an interest in it. I haven't been very vocal about the track, as there haven't been any issues. I don't foresee any issues. It's only been getting better year after year under the new ownership.
Okay, well, we can hold off on resurrecting it for sure.
If there are any violations of noise, I deal with them on a case by case instance, so.
Okay.
So, Mr. Brown, are you willing to stay on the committees you're already on? The Ag Commission, Energy Committee?
Yes.
All right, and I'm willing to stay on the ones that I'm already on. So I think that's everything?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on. Let's see, the establishment of goals and objectives.
This is usually something that the board takes up at a subsequent meeting after they've had an opportunity to think about it and then submit things. And then we put them on an agenda, and the board typically has a discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's what we usually do. So be thinking of what goals and things you want to accomplish this particular year.
And what were our goals for this particular year?
I think we need to discuss them. I think that that's a long list. I'd love to have some time to actually talk about.
And I think you're right. So we should probably postpone this and have a discussion about what have been our goals and objectives, and how did we do on them, and then what are our goals and objectives as we go forward.
Fabulous.
All right, so do you want that on for the April 5th agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay.
See, what else? Do we have anything else on here for committees? I think we're in good shape, yeah.
So you'll need to open the public hearing for the discussion of the commercial brush fees?
Let's see. If someone wants to help me do that, I'd appreciate it.
I have to say, as you're opening the hearing for this particular purpose?
Okay, so we're opening the Select Board meeting of 3/22. For, I'm sorry, help me here, Scott.
So you're opening the public hearing on commercial brush fees at the transfer station, so.
Okay, commercial brush fee.
And then you can maybe ask Steve to present information, and then if the public has comments, they can speak.
Okay, Steve, are you with us?
Yeah.
You were with us? Okay.
I'm here.
You're on the stage.
All right.
Transfer Station Commercial Brush Public Hearing for Adoption of Fees by Commercial Users.
So in the last year and a half, there's been a couple new landscapers in town that have started up business and doing odd jobs. And they have been using our transfer station as their brush dump, which there currently is no issue with, other than the fact that they are bringing in a lot of brush, a lot more than our budgets were designed for. They're all Lee residents, the ones that are doing it, so they have transfer station stickers. That's not the issue. The issue is, is when they go do tree work for their customer, they're hauling at times 10 to as many as 15 loads of brush in a day with their trucks, which is far more than the normal homeowner would bring in. And this year especially, our brush has probably doubled from what it has been in years past because of this issue. It costs us currently like $5,500 to chip the brush pile. We chipped that brush pile in the middle of the summer, and it's already ready to be chipped again. And with my budget being $6,000 to chip the brush, I obviously don't have the money to chip it until the new fiscal year starts. And at that point, the pile will be so big, it'll be over budget to chip. So we're looking into options for it, but to me, this would be the first step in trying to recoup some of that money, because they're obviously getting paid to cut the trees up and haul the brush away. And they're getting it for free on our end, where they're charging to probably haul it. So, and it's all one-ton dump trucks or trailers hauling it in. So that's why I did the fees that I did, like a one-ton dump or a big dump trailer. It would get towed behind a car, or sorry, get towed behind a truck, would be the 20. And then a regular pickup truck would be 10, and this would only be for businesses, landscape businesses, the regular homeowner, and we would not have to pay any of these fees.
Any comments?
Are we going to determine who is a commercial contractor? Do we know? Just we just know who they are?
Yeah, we know who they are. And by DOT laws, because they're commercial, they have to have their names on the side of their truck with DOT numbers. So that's the easiest way to identify them, is they have to have the name on the side of the vehicle.
Has anyone reached out that's a commercial contractor about this?
Not yet. That was going to be my step if this got instituted.
Got it.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we need to make a motion for this?
Do you have any comments from the public, the people listening in?
I haven't seen any.
Makes a lot of sense and seems logical. I just, I would love to know if there's anything we're missing.
So I make a motion to accept the...
Well, I think you have to close the hearing first, right, Julie?
You could do it within the hearing.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the fees proposal as presented by Steve Bullock. Any comments?
I'll second it.
Scott?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, Scott?
Yes.
Katrin?
Yes.
Yes. Motion's passed.
So Steve, you'll reach out to the commercial haulers and let them know about this change?
Yeah, there's really two major ones, so you can reach out to them. And Tom knows one of them pretty well, so I'll probably use Tom to help me with that one, for at least one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Annie Kazowski, Library Trustee Chair. I want to talk about the expansion. Annie, are you with us?
No, the Annie Kazowski let me know today that the trustees have ended up not being ready to make a recommendation, so they asked that they be placed on the April 5th agenda.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Steve Bullock, Public Works Manager, Roll Off Truck Funding. Steve, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm babysitting too, so I was seeing if my kid, what she was doing in the living room.
Okay, all right.
Sorry about that. I thought I had a little bit of time between me and the library before this one.
It's no problem. Just let's go ahead.
So I think I was, I think we wanted to do the payment split between the two. So this was what I came up with. This would be the total price of the truck. If it was, if anyone wanted to change it, I'd be open to changing it. And I just saw a little while ago that Mr. Bugby sent me an email about percentage of use, and it would probably be 90% transfer station, 10% highway.
So with that said, Steve, I'd like to change the percentages to reflect that.
Okay.
Because in conversations with Mr. Tappan about the trust funds, that's something that they'd be looking for.
Okay.
They'll also be looking for a statement for you from the fact of what you just said.
Yeah.
You're anticipating that the use will be 90% for the transfer station and only 10% for the highway department.
Yeah.
So they will need some kind of a statement from you to that particular fact.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if Mr. Tappan would like to comment, but I would propose that 90% of it, maybe rounded to the nearest thousand, I don't know, would come out of the transfer station. So maybe, what is it, 185, 989 times point nine? So maybe, let's say 168,000 out of the transfer station capital reserve fund and the remaining coming out of the highway department?
Steve, you have any comment on that?
No, that's fine. I fully anticipated these numbers being moved.
That would leave 18,989 to come out of the highway department. So 168 as a transfer and 1,889 at a highway. That's what I'd like to propose.
Steve, comment? That's okay?
Yeah, yeah. Just writing it down.
And just remember, Steve, the truck has to be red.
Oh, no, it's already red. It's already...
Oh, good, good, good.
Stated that way.
No comment. I make a motion to accept the proposal for the roll-off truck funding from the Capital Reserve Fund. Can I get a second?
Can you state the dollar amounts for the motion, please, Mr. Brown?
If you'd give them to me, I would.
How about if I make the motion?
Go ahead.
I move to authorize the withdrawal of 168,000 from the transfer station Capital Reserve Fund and $1,8989 from the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of purchase, for the purchase of a new roll-off truck.
I'll second that.
Should I make a comment?
Sure.
Isn't the total 185?
Oh, did I just do it wrong?
I think so.
Oh, all right, hold on. 186, 988. No, oh. Yes, all right. I take that back. Nobody seconded it, right? So I move to authorize the withdrawal of 168,000 for the transfer station Capital Reserve Fund and $17,989 from the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of the new roll-off truck. Sorry about that. Thank you, Julie, for catching that.
Yep.
I was trying to give Steve an extra $1,000, but never mind.
I'll second it. Any comments?
No.
We move forward? Thank you.
You have to do a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Katrin?
Yes, I, whatever.
Either works.
Scott?
Yes.
Carrie, yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passed. Karen Rossi, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Hello. So this driveway application is going to be tabled until after the Conservation Commission talks about it. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Then the next thing I have is Rec Commission met last week, and our suggestion is that we continue the MOU with ORYA until June 30th, 2022. And at that time, the town hire or do the scheduling in-house and not go with either MOUs. That we do the maintenance ourselves and do the field scheduling ourselves. And then we just rent the fields to both organizations and/or other organizations.
Any comments on that?
I have a couple of questions. I see that we have a one or the other. Is there any other option that we have? Could we, is there any other choice or any other way that we could do that in-house in a different way? I know we don't have the budget right now. But is there any way we could do it differently?
You mean, starting now, do it differently?
Well, we're starting sometime soon. I know we don't have anything in place, so I don't want to cause any trouble to the current season. But I think there's a lot to be discussed in this, and I think there's a lot of, I mean, I can't even tell you the number of people who have reached out about this. I just think that it's important that we... I, I agree absolutely in-house in 2022. Is there any way to move that any closer? Or are we, do we have to pick one of these two?
Well, one of the reasons the rec committee was, is encouraging to stay with ORYA. Is they have a lot of money recently that they've put into the fields and a lot of money scheduled to put into the fields as soon as possible. And we didn't think that that was really fair. Figured it'd be fair to give them a amount of time to. Get that all done and you instill use the fields. That was part of our reasoning for that, too.
Okay. And is there some way that we can? Verify if MVFC isn't, isn't feeling that that's at a fair or that they're getting a, you know, what they need from that? Is there some way that we can be involved? What are our options that way? If there's, if there's complaints or challenges, if ORYA, there's been a lot of heated feelings. So I'm just wanting to make sure, how are we going to make sure that this is going forward is. Fair to everyone involved?
My personal opinion and what we discussed at the rec committee was once the. Scheduling is done and we have no more MOUs, it would, it's the fairest way to do it.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments?
Can we ask Mr. Glow to comment about what was said at our last meeting about ORYA's lack of. Attentiveness to maintenance issues and things like that? I know Steve spoke in terms of his opinion, but can we ask Matt from his perspective? Please?
Okay, I don't see Matt.
Matt's here.
He's here.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Yep.
Yeah, I have. I don't think my camera's on, but I am here. So I was speaking with Steve at length about the comments from the last meeting. And I think we squared everything away. There were a couple of misunderstandings in there, not necessarily the full information that I had presented to him. So, you know, I, I believe that we have done our utmost to maintain our. Our MOU and keeping the facilities in great shape. The fall this past year, we did receive a quote to have the requested work done on the baseball field. But if we think back to the fall, that was a. We were still learning what was going on within the pandemic. We had just canceled our spring season. We were looking at while we had fall programs up and running, we were looking at a very unknown winter season. And still had a lot of unknowns with the pandemic moving forward in relation to youth sports. So. At that time, we weren't able to commit to the larger expense of the major upgrades to facility. But we are now with the spring season. I think the multi-use field has always been in great shape. And the vast majority of the time, the baseball field has been in good shape. But every certain number of years, you've got to invest in some larger grade improvements, which we are hoping to do this spring.
Thank you. Matt, can you also, you, you've just heard in terms of what the recommission is proposing to the board or their recommendations? Could you speak to that a little bit? I'm not sure how many people you schedule on a yearly basis. How much time does that take you? And I'm not sure in terms of if you can tell us in terms of how much revenue that brings in. If you could address those two issues for me, I'd appreciate it.
Tougher issues to, or tougher questions to answer off the top of my head. In terms of the scheduling. And the amount of time used on the field, I could offer that. I have the amount that we anticipate roughly from year to year in a file that I believe is included. In our packet or at least utilized for inclusion of our annual budget request packet to the town. A lot of time is put into organizing schedules. A lot of that is me liaising with our local volunteers. Our football coordinators, lacrosse coordinators, or baseball coordinators, or soccer coordinators. Who are all local residents and volunteers for the programs. So there is quite a bit of town, you know, in an hour, it would be hard for me to estimate an exact number of hours. I think the biggest issue in relation to the proposed plan will be the town determining a fair way. To determine who gets the use. You know, ORYA, who has the mission statement of Durham Lee and Madbury residents. Or another organization that, that it's also local. So a way to determine fairness between the two will be challenging. But if that's something the town would like to take on, we'll definitely follow the rules that they outline.
Okay, thank you.
Might I make a comment?
Yes.
I would anticipate that if and when the town takes on the scheduling, we're just going to have one point of contact with ORYA. So in other words, ORYA does all of its internal discussions across its various volunteers in sports. And then there's just. One person from ORYA speaking to the town in terms of what those needs are.
I would agree with that, Julie. That would definitely be the best way to go. That work would work best for us. And I would assume it would work best for you as well.
Okay. I'm a little confused here. Find that hard to believe, I know. But I see that we're on the. MOU for Little River Park and so on. Where does, where does maximum velocity come into this?
They offered us a different opportunity. Either ORYA or MVFC, we're going to be the ones to organize the fields.
Okay. And then I didn't see, did we skip over, A, the Ma Jones driveway permit application?
Yes, that'll be next time.
That was, that was pulled.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, Julie, can you, can't answer this probably question right now, but you can find out how much we got in terms of fees in a calendar year or a fiscal year, probably a fiscal year?
Well, let's maybe not talk about the COVID year.
Okay, in a typical year.
Yeah.
Typical year, it's, you know, it's definitely in the thousands of dollars.
Okay.
You know, it's maybe two, $3,000.
All right, could you get that for the next meeting, our next meeting, if you could, please?
Yep.
I appreciate it.
And those thousands come from outside of ORYA because they don't pay fees, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. We move on to item seven?
Well, so we have to decide which, are we going to discuss this later? Is that what you're saying? We have to decide which MOU we're using?
I'm sorry, would you say that again, Catherine?
Don't we have to decide which, if we're using the ORYA or MVFC MOU?
Yes. Because right now, what are we on? Julie, help me out with this. This is a perpetual agreement we have right now with the MOU anonymously re. Re.
Correct. If you, if you didn't take any action on the MOU, it would. It would just. Keep rolling forward until either party took some definitive action.
All right. The, the, the issues that I have, one, I'd like to find out how much money this particular arrangement brings in for the town in terms of revenue. And two, in terms of the recommendation from the rec commission, I'd like to know what that does to affect our town staff. Because this is not something they've been doing because ORYA has been taking that particular job. So I, I'd like to ask Julie two things, one of which I've already asked. The second one is in terms of. How much time is this going to take? Whoever it is, it's going to be assigned to do this particular scheduling job. So I'd like to know the answers to those two questions before I decided on this personally.
Okay.
Can we also make it a no longer rolling over automatically? Or is that part of the?
Well, I think it's, what is it, 30 days, 60 days notice on either party?
So we have notice next year.
Correct. So I just want to make sure I understand the direction we're heading in. You're essentially going to table a decision on this? Until April 5th?
I, I have just spoken, so I'm only one vote. So I'm not sure what the other two are.
What other information do you need to make the decision, I guess? Because I, I feel like I have a lot of the information. I just. For me personally, I would, I would like to know that if something changes and for us as a town, would we be able to take back that ability to schedule our own fields? Or is this meaning that they absolutely have that power until 2022, July or June?
That according to the contract we have with them, we need to give them, I believe it's, what is it, 60 days notice?
Yeah, I think so. The, the other aspect of this, the other, I guess we'll just say the fact of it is. You know, both of these organizations, it's March, need to know.
Right.
Where they're going to be playing. And, and how they're going to move forward really come April. In addition, ORYA does have plans to put money into the baseball field. But they've held off pending this decision of the board. Because obviously, if there is no MOU with ORYA, there is no obligation on their part to spend money on the fields.
All right, let me, let me clarify my position. I'm okay with doing the MOU with Oyster River Youth Association at this particular time. I'm not okay with the suggestion from the rec commission until I have answers to those two questions. About next year, having the internal staff schedule the field. That's. What I'm having.
I think that is a really large conversation that needs to be held and, and it's going to take some time. So I agree 100%. I think it's much more complicated than that. So.
Yeah.
As the new liaison to the rec commission, I look forward to weeding out the details.
So. I guess, can we move to approve the MOU for the Oyster River Youth Association? And then we'll continue those particular discussions to find out what we do next year. Because I assume at some point, if we're not, if we're choosing to do that, we need to let them know as soon as possible because.
I agree.
Rec commission said June 30th. That's like in the middle of their season. So that's not good.
I think we need to decide tonight. Just, is there some way, is Steve Bullock still on? Is it possible to make sure that, that we have a way to. Verify things are getting done in a timely manner in the way that the town hopes?
Yeah, yeah, there is. To. Julie's comment, I would. Support approving the MOU today so they can get the work that is scheduled to get done, done before they start playing at the end of April. Or else you're going to run into a problem. Where nothing will be ready for when they need to start using the fields. And I know that the middle school wants to use the softball field and that baseball field. For. Their season because their baseball field and softball field has a new school being built on it right now. So. There's usage for the field other, for the baseball fields at least, other than ORYA. So. There's stuff that needs to get done to them. And the longer we wait, the harder it's going to be to get on a schedule to get the stuff taken care of. And we do a pretty good job talking with Gary from Hillside and Matt. We had an issue at the end of last year with the baseball field. And that is the only field that we've ever. That we have a problem with was the infield of the baseball field, nothing else. And if they're going to fix it this year and abide by what they said they were going to do. I'm happy.
Okay, I, I have a question because item six goes on, it says. A consideration of existing agreement between the town and ORYA and consideration of agreements submitted by maximum velocity. Present rec commission recommendations. Now, I really haven't heard any conversation from, from recommendations about the maximum velocity issue.
Karen said that they discussed it during the rec commission and that they chose to go with the ORYA MOU.
Okay. Okay. So do we want to close this?
Well, we need to. Do something.
Agreed.
So.
Vote.
So how about, well, how about? I would, I would like to move to approve the MOU as presented from the Oyster River Youth Association and to extend the agreement. To March 31st, 2022. And also to update there's some terms in there that need to be changed. For instance, the Public Works Manager is now the Public Works Director. So if we can update that, that would be great. I think us, other stuff should be fine. But I would like to move that.
Okay, I'll second that. Catherine?
Any discussion?
Any, yeah, any discussion? I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, no.
No.
No. Okay. So, all in favor, Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Carrie, yes. We'll move on to seven. Scott Bugbee Selectman, Town Hall Renovation Committee.
The Town Hall Renovation Committee continues to meet every week. We'd like to propose a working meeting with the select board for April 15th. That's a Thursday at 4:00 PM. We have a whole bunch of information to present to you. Also, we'd like to have a subsequent meeting to go over. There's a, there's a tool that one of our members, Mr. Tappin, has created. We call it the CIFP, the Capital Improvement Funding Plan. And we'd like to have a separate meeting to discuss that, possibly a third meeting to go over anything else that you want to talk about. But we'd like that initial meeting to be April 15th at 4:00 PM. If that would be possible, that would be great. And of course, it would be a select board meeting that the Town Hall Renovation Committee would just attend.
Okay. Does that go on? Do we go on then with how about the electronic election system project?
I assume everybody can make that meeting then, is that?
Yeah.
We'll try.
The electronic election system, Karen is here to help us, to give us some information about it. But it's something that Karen mentioned at the last election. It sounds like an intriguing idea. And I'd like us to pursue it if possible, but Karen is going to speak to it a little bit. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you, Julie, for helping me get in. So when Don Quigley and I did our moderator training last summer, one of the presentations was from Londonderry. Who uses a system, which is a test system and. Several communities, you can apply to the state to do this. This is the direction the state is moving in. And it's referred to as the E-Pole system. I sent Scott the PowerPoint from that presentation, and I'm sure he can share it with the other selectmen as well. But basically, what it is in a nutshell is it takes. Our books. That the ballot clerks fill out and it, it becomes an electronic system. So how it works is you would have a series of interconnected. Secured laptops and who would have them would be the ballot clerks, the town clerk. The moderators and at least one, if not all of the. Yeah, supervisors of the checklist. And it's a secured system, which I won't get into tonight. But anyway, it is a secured system that is set up. So what happens is when the voter comes to check in like they do now. And they present a valid form of New Hampshire ID, be it a driver's license or a non-driving ID. They can actually place that into a reader and it brings that person's name and information up and. Quote-unquote checks them in, checks them against the checklist. And if they're a registered voter, it will then check them in. If, if they don't have that type of ID, then, you know, the person running the laptop types the first couple of letters of the last name and it pops up with everybody who is. Registered to vote. They select the correct person. Verify the ID, same way that happens. And what then happens is a piece of paper is printed. And that person moves to the next station where they receive a ballot. The benefit of this system, and I'm brushing through it, is that. The verification is, it takes the human error out of, did I cross the right name or wrong name off? Particularly when somebody's inserting their ID. And it's very quick. It's done within a few seconds. There's no flipping pages to look up somebody's name. The same process where somebody announces their name and so forth still goes on, but there isn't the, you know, ballot clerk having to go through and find the person's name, verify it, cross it off, so forth and so on. The other benefit is that it is a running total, which I know we do with the machine, but this is a running total which is live. So we know exactly how many people have voted. And at the end of the night, um, we have an accurate count of the books. And anyone that's been involved with any of the elections, that can last, you know, anywhere from an hour to six hours, depending on how the count goes when we actually count the, the, the votes in the books versus what the machine tells us. And uh, all the uh, activity that is done by the uh, both uh, the town clerk and uh, by the supervisors of the checklist go into the system. It goes automatically up to ElectionNet uh, when we've agreed with the number we have on uh, the E-Pole System and uh, what the machine shows, it's a keystroke and the information sent immediately to the state. And it does all the other breakdown that we have to do for some elections. So for example, presidential primary, we have a lot of information that gets reported. How many people are Republican? How many people are Democrat? How many people went from undeclared, you know, back and forth? And um, were they absentee ballot, non-absentee ballot? Speaking of absentee ballots, as we lead up to an election, the town clerk does this process of putting the absentee ballot information into ElectionNet. That would post automatically uh, into the system. So we would know right off if somebody has uh, applied for an absentee ballot, whether or not um, the town clerk has received it back or not. Um, and so the, it, it eliminates the, the, the other step that we have to do for verification of absentee ballots uh, at the time of the vote. I know one of the big questions that the board is going to have is how much does this cost? And I don't know that answer right now. Um, I do know that does require the purchase of some laptops. Um, and there is a fee for the software, but my understanding is currently since it's in the testing mode uh, with the state, that fee is waived. How much it is, again, I am still in that research phase. To me, it seems like it's the path forward for us. Uh, it will certainly uh, make it easier, make it faster through the polls. Uh, both London Dairy and Rochester have used it. There's several of the towns that have used it. And they've said that they've decreased the time from the check-in to the voter exiting by uh, anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes, depending on how long the lines are. So it's increased the, the speed of people moving through the polls. Uh, there's also less contact, you know, although we're hopefully getting out of the COVID thing, there is, oh, there's less contact with the voter and the, and the staff working at the election. So that's my kind of longer brief summary. I'm available for questions.
Karen, can you tell us in terms of the path forward? I know this is something that the, what is it? The town clerk and the moderator have to accept to move this forward. Could you tell us what the path forward might look like in your eyes?
Well, we, the moderator and the town clerk, it's ultimately the moderator, but obviously the town clerk and the supervisors of the checklist should agree they want to move in this path forward. Then we can uh, make the request uh, from, to the state and ask to be a participant in, in the project. And then wait for the Secretary of State's office to tell us that yes, we can or no, we can't. We could also, if we wanted to wait on making that request, we could request a presentation from one of the primary vendors, this three primary vendors that are working with the state on this. And so that you could physically see how this works.
Okay.
So, so Karen, um, if I, if I understand correctly, we would buy the software package and uh, some laptops, et cetera, et cetera?
Yep, and uh, we'd have to work with, I'm back by, I assume is still our, our computer provider with some network security things, but yes, that is correct. My understanding is that, and is that if you participate in this trial program that the cost of the software is significantly reduced versus coming into it new.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be also concerned about, uh, you know, if it crashes in the middle of the vote, uh, how do they, how do they respond to that?
There's redundant backups within the, within the system. Um, and we would have a, a, an alternate location. Say for example, the town clerk's office, uh, where the information would be being uploaded uh, in that location. So that it was away from the polling place. So if we had a crash, um, that information's being maintained. Because and additionally, while you're on this secure network, your information's uploading to the state in a continuous basis uh, into basically a cloud account they have set up for it. Uh, so within, you know, i- if it was a a network kind of crash, like you had a power loss or something like that, you could theoretically be up and running in a very short period of time. And it would retain the accuracy of where you were at at the time of the crash.
Thank you.
We have anything that's a backup that's not related to the, to that system? Would we have something if, if it was hacked or something like that happened? That would be separate from that system still?
Well, that's part of the reason it's going to the cloud. Um, it's also, um, my understanding, because I've asked that same question is uh, basically it's a, other than the cloud piece, uh, it's a closed system. So in other words, the only laptops that are talking are the laptops that are being used. And it's connected typically, well, if we were say at the public safety building or at the school, they would actually be connected by ethernet cord. And then there would be a periodic time that it would feed up to the cloud. So um, it's extremely, because of that, since it's a closed system, it's extremely difficult to hack. But yes, there are, there are redundant places where the information is if we were to be hacked. I guess they've had people try to hack into it and have been unsuccessful.
Did you, you said that you're, they still need to say their name. Are they still going to have to say their address at that? Or is that something we could finally avoid?
No, that is, uh, that is a requirement under state law that uh, you, you state your name and address. And that goes to when you have uh, uh, people observing so that they can hear your name and address.
Thank you.
That's a separate state law. Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't change this at all.
Got it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Karen, can you keep the board or somebody keep the board apprised in terms of how this moves forward with the moderator and the town clerk?
So I'm gathering that's the direction you would like us to go.
I personally think we need to explore it. Um, I'm not sure about the other two members, but I would like us to explore that.
I agree.
No, I agree completely. Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I will get with uh, with Don and we'll go from there. And yes, I will report back to Don or I will report back to the board.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, we'll move on. I, I don't know what D is. The bat house update.
The, at the last meeting, the, the uh, church uh, environmental uh, student group asked permission to um, uh, put up new bat houses for the bat houses that were deteriorating on town forests.
Oh, yes.
They've had two changes since then. They've gone to uh, decided not to do that and they decided to do bee hotels. I learned all about bee hotels, which is, I didn't know anything about. And uh, so they were going to do that on church property. So that means they're not going to be on town property. And subsequent to that, I've heard that they're going back to do bat houses, but on church property. So uh, either way, the town property is not affected by what we voted at the last meeting. So I just wanted to update the board on that particular update that in particular.
So, so they're going to do bat houses and bee hotels?
N- no, no, they're just doing bat houses on church property now. That's what they're doing at the moment. So no more bee hotels, unfortunately. I learned about bee hotels and they sound really cool. So.
You can still make one yourself, Scott.
Uh, I'm, don't think they're that cool.
We'll do a craft project.
I have enough stuff to do. Thank you very much.
Well, there's a young man in town that makes great bat houses, so.
And in terms of item seven B, um, I, we've had a request, uh, I don't know how many meetings ago. We gave the historical side permission to store stuff in the annex. The Historical Society would like to request that they allow, be allowed to use that space for some administrative functions besides storage. Once again, not turning up the heat or adding any expense to the town, but they'd like to use it for some administrative stuff. They're in the process of redoing the museum uh, and moving some displays around there with the extra spaces that, that all these stored stuff that is in the annex is doing, they're going to be able to put up some more displays. So they have asked me to request from the board permission to do some administrative stuff there. So I'm asking if the board is okay if that's possible. And this is already on a temporary basis. They can't have it forever and ever, but just in the interim, they'd like to use that space for that purpose.
Okay, Catherine, are you okay with that?
That sounds good to me.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Um, is the Historical Society in a position where they would be able to take over the payment of the electric bill?
Hmm, I could ask them that question. How much is it?
Uh, Karen, do you know what your monthly electric bill was?
It was about, I would say it averaged about a hundred and ten dollars a month.
I will ask them that, but.
But that was for forty hours a week.
Yeah, so.
Correct. It's computers.
What is it since Karen moved out? Do we know?
You know, I don't know that off the top of my head. I mean, I think the minimum electric bill is somewhere around twenty-five or forty dollars.
All right, could you find out for us for the next meeting? And I can ask them that?
Yep.
Because the only thing that's really running there is running the furnace and the uh, what, the alarm system and the power for the well, right?
Uh, I don't know if the power for the well comes from there.
Okay, all right.
And the line. Is that the well that's used by everyone or just for the annex?
It's the well used by everybody. Could, could be us announced. Steve, are you still there? Are you checking on your child?
I'm here. My wife's home from horseback riding, so I'm here.
Oh, okay. Did you ask Peter Hoyt? He would know what powers that well. Could you guys deal with that? Maybe Warren, Pete would probably know, wouldn't he?
Yeah, I'll ask him tomorrow morning.
Because yeah, that's, that's the other thing. So maybe it's something that's prorated. I, I don't know. But if we can find out what's the cost is and if Pete can let us know if that's the final that's providing the power for the wealth that everybody uses.
Okay, Scott, I, I'd like to know if they, they don't see any issue with insurance uh, for storing the stuff in there in case it burns or whatever?
Well, they don't have any insurance on where it is stored now, so you would need no change for them.
Okay, well, fair enough.
Any other? I don't think, I don't think there's any contents insurance on the museum at the moment, is there, Julie?
Uh, I don't believe so because it's not ours.
Yeah, well, technically, the building is owned by.
No, I mean, the contents are not ours.
Correct, so yeah, it wouldn't be a change.
Okay. All right, number eight, Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
Thank you. Um, you've all had the petition for an amended license uh, from Eversource for, I don't know, more than a few days, maybe a week. So I think, uh, I know that Mr. Green is in the meeting from Eversource. I think I'm going to let him just briefly speak to it, if you don't mind.
No, it's fine. Hello, thank you. Um, yeah, my name is John Green. Uh, I'm with Eversource Community Relations. And I serve as the primary point of contact for the town now with Eversource, uh, and working closely with Julie and other municipal officials. Um, we want, thank you guys for allowing us to be here tonight to discuss this issue of a Eversource request for the New Hampshire Public Utilities PUC licensing, licensing permits. Um, this is for a reliability enhancing infrastructure project on one of our transmission lines. Uh, we refer to that as the S V one twenty nine line that runs through the Seacoast region, uh, including Lee. Um, so these PUC permits are in regards to a project that will uh, replace a total of thirty-one wooden structures in the town of Lee, uh, with more resilient, longer lasting steel structures. Uh, and it will make an upgrade to the electricity grid communications technologies that are on the poles, uh, which improves electric grid communication speeds and allows uh, for a more enhanced uh, electric system reliability. Uh, our team uh, has filed the permits in accordance with the regional, state and local regulators at this time. The product team met with and received a green light from the Lee Conservation Commission, um, February first, 2020. And to address any further concerns or questions you have, I do have a few colleagues from the team with me here. Uh, Kurt Nelson from our licensing and permitting team and Eric Newman from our legal department, who's been working um, on this issue as well. So we are, we're eager to work with folks and address any questions and concerns you may have. Um, thank you again for the opportunity to speak here tonight. Um, as I said, my, my colleagues Kurt and Eric are here as well. So I, I'll see if uh, if either of them have any remarks they'd like to add here.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Comments?
Do we have it so that the other gentleman can speak?
This is Kurt Nelson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I can uh, start to be, I was, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Eric Newman, our, our, our counsel is, is on the meeting. I didn't see his name, so he may not be here. And uh,
Come on, Kurt.
Awesome. I just didn't, oh, thank God. Okay, Eric, why don't you take it? If you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, great.
So, I, I know that the uh, the matter on your agenda this evening concerns the PUC license. And uh, we, we are required to seek a license anytime one of our projects involves work on or over public waters or state-owned lands. So part of that broader project that John just described does encompass a single uh, public water crossing of the Oyster River in your town. So the, 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 the license that we received from the PUC under that order is just focused on that span across the, the Oyster River. And um, as part of the issuance of that order, the PUC requires us to notify a number of stakeholders, um, including the host town. So that's the reason you received a copy of the order. And the way the order functions, it's, it's an order NISI, meaning it becomes effective by its own terms uh, after a certain prescribed period of time. And the, the purpose of that is to give those folks uh, uh, that receive copies or, or notification of the grant of a license, so the opportunity to, to think about the project, ask any questions, and potentially offer comment to the PUC. So, we, I think we've got the right folks here. If you do have any specific questions about the project scope in regards to that crossing of the Oyster River, happy to, to answer them at this time.
Hey, Ken, I, I'm not sure which one of you can answer this question, but do you guys have like a little map? Because I, I understand it's L one seventy-five and structures forty-three and forty-four, but I have no idea where those are. Do you guys have a map or something that could show us where those particular things are that you're talking about?
We do have a map. Uh, I don't know what's best. I could send that to Julie or someone who could put her on the screen or what would be best here.
If you could uh, actually email it to Karen Rossi.
Okay.
I'll then give her permission to share the document.
Karen? Could you also email the, the picture of how you, there's a, there was a picture in the document about how they were going to protect the waterways. There's uh, layers. I'm trying to remember what it was. Take that on here. Somewhere in there.
This is the hole.
I didn't see that part, but.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I didn't see it.
Am I making that up in my head? I felt like there was something, okay, maybe I read it someplace else.
Not sure.
What is the way that they, that the water is, is, that that area is protected and maintained safely as possible?
So this is Kurt Nelson. Um, so there, we institute standard uh, best management practices for erosion and sedimentation control. The structures in question, I think are a fair distance from the stream itself. So we have a, a fair amount of room to work with, so. So we have a, a fair amount of room to work with, so, uh, not anticipating any, anything close to a direct impact uh, or any, any work, uh, near, directly adjacent to the stream itself, so. Um, very, very, um, minimal chance of any, any impacts to the, to the stream as a result of this work. It's just part of the PUC requirement that any wires crossing a public water body be licensed through the PUC.
So there's no, like, endangered species or anything like that? You guys checked that all out already, I assume, correct?
Right. Well, we're doing this, this particular, this particular, these two structures that are being replaced um, are part of a suite of, uh, um, as John said, thirty-one structures in town that encompass actually three different circuits. And so, yes, we've, we've done, uh, permitting with the state. Uh, we've been in front of the Concom as part of our wetlands permitting.
Yeah.
There, there is review, uh, by New Hampshire Fishing Game for rare and endangered species issues.
Thank you. Thanks.
I think I read somewhere that the, that the, um, effect so that people of the town, the, uh, power would be going through a different way, or will there be power outages?
Nope, there will be, there will be outage. This is all bulk electrical transport transmission system, so there will be no, there'll no customer outages.
Beautiful.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Karen, did you get that map?
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh, I sent it, so it should be through the airwaves now, I guess.
Well, I suggest we move on.
Yep. Can we, like, move on and then when Karen gets it, she can let us know, so I can see it?
I did get it. If Julie, if you can let me share, that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, I have to.
You have to close that.
I have to close my sharing and then.
Yep.
Okay, I always forget about that part.
Can you all see that?
Oh, so I don't, that doesn't answer my question. Whereabouts is this in the town of Lee? I cannot recognize those trees.
Caleb, this is Caleb Highway looking north.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the second page has a map as well, just to let you know.
Oh, second page.
This, um, just a, this is Kurt, yeah.
Oh, here we go.
This is, this is actually not the structure, the, the area subject to the PUC license.
Oh.
We apologize. The, um, John, I don't know if you have the map page, so with the, the, there are two structures that span the Oyster River right by the Route one fifty-five, uh, crossing area. I don't know if you had that map available or, or not, John.
Um, I'm checking now. I may not have that one available.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Let me, I couldn't. Search my labyrinth of files here.
Karen, you know exactly where this is? Can you explain it to me in terms of where the crossing is on one fifty-five?
I don't know. I was just looking at that picture.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No. I, I know where it is, Scott. They did work on that, they did work on that same power line last year. It goes, um, by Demerit Hill Farm down in the hollow before you head up the hill into Durham.
Oh, okay.
So it's crossing from like Chuck Cox's property across the one fifty-five and the Oyster River, up that power line there.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No. Well, thank you to the, uh, Eversource people for attending. I appreciate their time.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
So the, so the action that the board could take with this is just if you had any comments that you wanted to forward to Eversource, but it doesn't sound like there are going to be any?
I don't have anything. I'll just.
As long as fishing game is covered, making sure we don't do this during the time of, you know, nesting of anything important and that. And I'm sure that they've taken care of that, but I'm happy.
Okay. Comment from Eversource on that?
I think they signed off, didn't they?
Yeah, I think they said that fishing game had talked to them and the Conservation Commission, I'm sure, and that somebody has mentioned.
They did, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Julie, we got some other items here. Twenty twenty rev- revow update?
Uh, yes, um, we, uh, Scott Marsh and I met today with, um, Jeff Earls of C C A G. Um, he's now been given access to our avatar files. Um, I still don't have a definitive start date, um, but his end date hasn't changed, uh, for the entire revow, which is July. Um, so the other thing I'd like to ask is if anybody has any comments or questions or suggestions for this proposed news release. I think it's important that we start to get the word out, um, to everybody that this is happening.
Yes. I think we'll probably have to send out multiple reminders that this is happening over the next couple of months. Because this is, uh, you know, somebody coming up knocking on your door saying, I want to come in and et cetera, so.
Right.
Most of the. Sorry. Sorry. Go ahead. Just, do we happen to know how often they actually, do we have a percentage of how often they actually get out of the car or how often? I know a lot of times they have to work pretty quickly and they don't have a lot of time to do a proper appraisal, like a, an in-detail appraisal. Do we know how often they do actually?
How often someone lets them into the house?
Well, I don't think that they always ask to be let in the house. Is that?
Well, this is different. This is a revow. This isn't the normal.
Okay.
Um, cyclical, um, assessing. Well, it is cyclical, but, um, no. So they, they're gonna try to contact, um, the owners of every house that is sold within the past two years.
Perfect.
And that's probably a fair amount because, as you know, twenty twenty was a busy year for real estate.
Yeah.
I, I mean, given COVID and just what I know in general from the assessing function, I can't imagine that a whole lot of people would let them in the house.
Yeah.
Um, but they have to ask.
Got it.
Julie, can you tell us how are you gonna distribute this? Is it gonna be in the newspaper? How, how are you gonna get?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm gonna send it to the newspapers. I, you know, we can't promise that they're actually going to put it in there as a news story. Um, and then obviously we'll also put it on the website. We'll find a way to get it on Facebook. Um, put it out as an, or like, we send out those red banner urgent alerts.
Yeah.
May receive. Um, so I guess all the kind of typical ways that we send notices out.
And you said July, he'll be done by July. Is that July two thousand twenty-one or twenty-two?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. Thank you.
You want to put the message sign up in the center of town like we did for voting?
Hmm, I mean, this is kind of a long-term thing. I don't know whether we wanna. I don't know. We'd have to, maybe we'll talk about that offline. Yep. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Item C, recreational usage application.
So we received a request from, uh, Brian Belanger to use the pavilion. As some of you may know, most requests for the pavilion are pretty routine. Denise just handles them. She, you know, gets the application from them, makes sure that it's within the parameters and, um, and then just makes the reservation for them of the pavilion. Every once in a while, one comes across her desk that she brings to my attention. And then even rarer than that is one that I bring to the select board, and that's what this is. So Mr. Belanger wants to use, uh, not only the pavilion, but I think also the fields at Little River Park for a family reunion. Um, he says up to a hundred and fifty people, but then he mentioned to Denise when he brought the form in that he might have a thousand people. Um, and then he, and he also wants to have a band. So this is, we have never had such an intense use for this type of thing of Little River Park, and I think it's something that, you know, we kind of have had conversations about more aligned with the MOUs, but what, what does the board want Little River Park to be? And, and I'm not sure that we want to open it up to private events that are this intense.
This is like the size of a wedding, so.
Yeah, it's essentially a wedding.
If you had a, a wedding, it would cost hundreds and hundreds of dollars to have this kind of.
It would, yeah, I know, because I was recently involved in an outdoor wedding. It's many thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to, to rent an outdoor venue, so. I, I don't know where we'd park a hundred and fifty people.
Yeah, and then the, the police and the fire department would now be responsible. And that, I just don't think our expenses are covered at all.
No. And obviously, one porta potty isn't gonna handle it either.
Yeah, that's a very different thing than having a, a picnic underneath for a few friends.
Now, I guess because we never really anticipated that someone would ask for this kind of use. We don't right now have a rule that, or policy that would prevent it, but the board can always say no because the board controls the land.
Is developing a better, um, uh, set of policies and rules for these different types of situations something that we could work on?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, I think, I mean, I know that we had discussions where we built a pavilion and, and we did come up with some rules, but at the time we didn't, I don't think that we limited the number of people, but that certainly might be a place we want to start.
Well, I think you did say that it could be upwards of a thousand people?
That's what he said to Denise.
Yeah, well, that's, that's it.
Well, I think.
That's a stop sign right there.
Uh, yeah, well, I think for me, it's the parking because down in the rules under number, what is it, number three? It says Little River Park Parking Designated Gravel Parking Area Only.
Right.
No way they're gonna get a hundred and fifty cars in the area, so I would, uh, not approve this particular request at this time.
I agree.
I agree. Okay, so do you want me to, do we want to just consider this a one-off? Or do we want to develop some stricter rules around the use of the pavilion?
Rules around the use of the pavilion, just so that people don't feel like, you know, oh, why did you do that to me and it didn't to someone else? I think we need to have fair rules that, so people know how to plan their own events and, and what they can and can't do beforehand.
I think we need to have some, some written guidelines about the, the pavilion and, uh, what the, what the max capacity uh, should be for the park, if you would, under one of these circumstances. But we, we need to look at the, the policies for all the public use things and, and see if they need to be updated.
Okay. All right, we will start working on that. Uh, any other questions?
Don't? Anybody? Okay, so we have our COVID travel policy update.
Yep, so this is, at this point, Karen might remember better than I, the third or fourth version of this. Um, obviously, things have changed since a year ago, and, um, so the policy keeps changing to try to play catch-up. What I'm suggesting at this point is that we state in our policy that we're just gonna follow the most recent travel guidelines issued by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services so that we're not constantly revisiting this.
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Okay, Scott, you okay?
Perfectly fine.
All right, I will get that in final form for, um, signatures. Thank you.
And I assume our health officer has signed off on this, I assume?
It was her idea.
Okay, blame her then.
Yes, it's, it's good. Thank you, Scott.
Uh, personally, I think it was her idea because someone wants to go somewhere, but I could be wrong.
Oh, oh, okay.
That seems fair.
I could be wrong about that.
We have COVID here, they have COVID there, so.
Yeah.
Okay, can we move on to the ninety-one? The ninety-one update?
I can give you a very brief update, um, on where we are with the Holly Pirtle ninety-one A request. Um, our attorney is, uh, presently reviewing all of the digital documents and expects to be able to give them over to Ms. Pirtle's attorney, I think sometime this week. Uh, and then, as you may recall, Ms. Pirtle is planning to come to the select board on April fifth, at the April fifth meeting, and on the advice of our attorney, that is going to be a non-public discussion.
Okay. Okay, any comments?
Thank you for the update.
Sure. Um, today we received our final, 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 uh, fiscal twenty-two rates from the Health Trust. And, uh, I guess the good news is that they are not gonna be a nine percent increase as we had been told when they issued the G M R rates in October. Um, but they are still gonna be a six-point-two percent increase. But still, that's, that's better than nine percent, so.
So how much is that in dollars that we potentially won't have to spend?
Uh, assuming that the lives were all the same.
Yeah.
Uh, it's about ten thousand dollars.
All right, thank you.
All right.
And that's everything I have. Um, before we get to the consent agenda, I just want to make sure, did you all receive my email about that? That there's one of the documents, um, specifically for the current use for text and map fourteen, three, two hundred?
Yeah.
So what you're seeing on your screen right here, which I sent you earlier today, is the correct document. So I just wanted to make sure you were all aware of that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have to go down each one of these, or?
No, you just make a motion to accept.
Not just the consent agenda itself.
Yeah, just, just, Katrin, so you're aware? Any of, of the members of the select work can have any one or more of these removed for a discussion? So you don't, like, for instance, if you want to talk about, you know, G or something, we can talk about that and not put it in the consent agenda? So just be aware of that?
I didn't see anything that stood out, but yes, thank you.
Okay. Just going forward, that's part of the information, so.
Thank you. Very important.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I, yes.
Do a roll call?
Yes, that one.
Okay. So, Scott?
Yes.
Katrin?
Yes.
Carrie, yes.
Motion passes.
Motion's accepted. Don't have anything for unfinished business listed? I'll make a motion to enter into the non-public session per New Hampshire RSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three, capital H.
A and, A and L.
A and L, yeah.
A and L.
What?
A and L.
A and L, oh, sorry. Oh, A and L, oh, yeah, okay. Uh, roll call vote required. Selectman Bugby?
I, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Katrin?
Yeah, we made sure no one else had anything else that needed to be said, so yes.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
And just, Katrin, for your edification, the miscellaneous unfinished business, if any of us, three of us have something we want to talk about, that's usually when we do it.
Okay, but I'm just making sure that the public got a chance to speak if they needed to speak, that's all.
Yeah.
Great.
Any miscellaneous unfinished business?
No, no, we're going into non-public, so.
Yes. Okay, motion to enter into non-publics.
We, you already did that.
To enter into non-public, did I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And you got a second?
Now a roll calling.
Yeah.
So I, I, I'm sorry, I'm.
Did we, did we finish the roll call, though?
No, no, we didn't.
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote. Scott?
Yes.
Katrin?
Yes.
Carrie, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Motion. Hello, Denise.
And I don't know why John Green's name is there, but okay.
Is he still there?
Possibly.
Maybe.
I do have one question for Denise. Did John Lacouris give you minutes for the last non-public? He was supposed to do that.
Oh. No.
All right, can you contact him about that?
I will.
And Mr. Brown's doing the minutes for today's non-public.
Okay.
Why, why is Katrin laughing?
I'm laughing because I know you're so excited to do that, and you're thrilled.
Yes, yes, you're very excited, Mr. Brown.
And I can see the book you're gonna write. Here's all the silly things Katrin asked me.
Well, we're both here for three more years. Well, I'm not, but you are, anyway.
I'm here for two. The other thing, Julie, can you, one of the things I'd like just to add is, before we went to COVID, we had a. Public comment section. Can we go back to putting that on the agenda, please?
Yes.
For subsequent meetings?
Yeah, we just have to. Yeah, I'll just have to think about how we're gonna manage that with Zoom, but yeah.
Well, the same rules in terms of three minutes and, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, I'm almost done, you can.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Not at the moment. So. Nothing else, I moved to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Are we gonna take a roll call?
We do.
Mr. Brown has to do that.
Yeah.
We usually, we usually say if anybody's in affirmative, we just all say yes, so.
What, what is it you want to do, Scott?
I'll, I'll do it. Who's in favor of adjourning, say yes.
Want to do a roll call vote?
No, 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 we'll just say yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, there you go, you're all done.